Don't stop the pledge.
Yes, I'll put that on top of the list for another meeting.
Yes.
The hour being seven thirty, I'd like to call the meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for a moment. The past week, we just want to recognize that Kathy's father-in-law, John Robinson, passed in the last week, and it's also the father-in-law of Pat Robinson, who was our former secretary.
We also had a tragedy in Millville with a parent of a third grader who was killed in an automobile accident in Franklin this past week.
Thank you. First thing we have is the introduction of members.
Well, Mike Buckley, Blackstone, right, first.
Morgan McCarthy of Blackstone.
Thomas Gallagher of Blackstone.
Kathy Robinson, Millville.
Diane Robyn, Blackstone.
Wendy Greenstein, Blackstone.
Erin Pinaco, Millville.
Dr. Perry Davis, interim superintendent of schools.
Steve Tringalli, Millville, and I'll be sitting in for Bill Chaplin tonight, who is unavailable as the chairman. Anyway. First order of business is consideration of Consent Agenda A, which consists of warrants, use of school facilities, field trip requests, and minutes of the meeting of September twelve and September nineteenth, two thousand thirteen.
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda A.
Motion made by Mrs. Robin.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Robinson. I'm sorry. Thanks, Wendy. And discussion on those items?
I just have one item. I spoke with Mr. Cameron today, the Washington DC trip. He brought it to my attention that it was the way it was left last year. He was going ahead with it for this year, and he didn't know whether or not he needed to resubmit for that request, and you wanted a formal presentation with him next school committee meeting, or we can just put it on as a field trip request. Do you want him to come next time, him to talk to you about it?
I thought he already had.
He did when he formally made the presentation, but it was his recollection, you know, if people otherwise I'd just treat it as a, through the superintendent.
And he's looking to do the same type of trip, same?
Just earlier in the year is what he had told us.
Right.
Yeah.
They changed the timing, too. They're not going, they're not traveling overnight.
But just, but not so much for our information, but again, for the audience, I think that might be better.
I mean, he's-
For the present, for, it's a significant event, so I think maybe we should discuss it for everyone at home's sort of edification.
So you'd like him to come?
Yeah, I'd at least like to see the details of exactly what's been planned out.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda A. Call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion's carried. Okay. Public forum. We'll have a one beginning and one at the end. Anything you want to say? Okay. All right, public forum need to come forth and identify yourself, even though we know who you are.
Good evening. I'm Joe Repose. I'm a Millville resident. I serve on the Board of Selectmen and on the Green Energy Committee, and tonight I'm here in behalf of the Green Energy Committee to request a letter from the superintendent with the support of the school committee to support Millville and its efforts related to becoming a green energy community. I'm losing my voice, I don't know why. But simply a green energy committee, there's a grant involved with this, and it's basically energy reduction or efficiency, conserving natural resources, reducing waste and emissions, and Millville, in this case, is eligible for a hundred and forty thousand dollar grant, and the Millville's school, the elementary school, is, has the largest carbon footprint in town. It's our most valuable asset along with the students, and naturally, that will get a lot of attention in our efforts in energy efficiency and carbon reduction. The town of Millville, we have, we need to submit our application before the end of October. The, in the requirement of that, Part A of that whole thing, if you're in the regional school district, you need a letter from the superintendent. I have a example of another district that I would, could share with Dr. Davis. That being said, I appreciate, the town of Millville will appreciate your support in this endeavor. There are many things we can address at the Millville Elementary School, and that we know the envelope of the building needs sealing up. I personally did a survey in, of the exterior lighting, and possibly with a help of National Grid, get some LED-type lighting there. It's a white light, it's more natural, and basically, it'll save about sixty percent of electrical energy for the exterior lighting of the school. That includes the Berthelit Way and the school grounds and fifteen exterior lights on the building. Another area we would address would be, there are two boilers in the school, and one of them, the last report I saw, was only running at seventy percent efficiency. Number one boiler was only running at eighty-two percent efficiency. So those are areas we could look at. Are there any questions?
Joe, wasn't there a Signifin Energy Initiative at Millville a couple of years ago?
Yeah, it was four or five years ago.
Yeah, that, the survey was done in two thousand and eight, and the upgrades for high-energy are more efficient lighting ballasts and the like, all those conversions took place in two thousand nine.
So this would be over and above that, or replacing anything, or just an extension of that?
This would be over and above that. There are measures you can take right now in terms of sensors and that kinds of things, those kinds of things that turn off lights, but a big thing is that parking lot, Berthelit Way, that we're all paying for. The district owns that, or the town owns that, and we pay those bills.
Mr. Repose, who's the funding source for this grant? Is this Department of Energy, or?
Department of Energy and Resources.
Okay.
Do they give us some guidelines on how that money needs to be spent?
The first phases of it is that we have to profile the community, and a database is established, or a base level, and the commitment that the town has to make is that we will effect within five years a twenty percent overall energy reduction. The, the way it's looking now, early on, it looks like we're going to achieve that goal in three years, and the Department of Energy work, will work with you every step of the way. We have a coordinator that's working with us on that, and he will assist in submitting the, the application.
Joe, is that something you're going to leave with us, so we can look it over and check into it and get back to your next meeting, or are we looking for?
Well, I just have a letter with notes. It actually was, I wouldn't mind leaving it, but if you don't mind my hand scratching, but this is what the Freetown-Linkville School Region Superintendent wrote as a guide, and I wouldn't mind sharing that. Well, and it's to be addressed-
So you think the grant, you may not want to see the letter.
Well, I think they're, they're two years into their program.
Unless the committee's comfortable, I didn't know if it was something we should check into or look over, or?
That's why I asked the question of a funding source. This is a-
Well, we're not committing any funds to this.
No.
And then the other thing is that if it's any improvements to, to district property or to the schools, then we just want to have first right of approval, not refusal, but approval, so that before any work went done, got done up there, that we, we were, you know, we had a vote on record. I don't have any problem with supporting the letter, but, you know, that, and I would like a copy of it, however, for the record, but, I mean, unless it says, you know, Joe Repose is going to, you know, take all the money, I don't, I'd want to make sure that doesn't happen.
That would never happen, Joe.
I do want to inform the committee that, that prior to my coming, a third-party company worked, did survey this school, and I did sign off on them submitting a proposal to National Grid to do some energy upgrades here. It would not be a hundred percent paid for by National Grid, but we should probably know in a month whether or not they'll, they'll qualify some of the things that have been identified in this building that would have, would make the building more energy efficient. And what they were looking at more specifically was not so much the lighting as electrical motors and the heating and ventilating area and doing some control changes. So, you know, we are doing it, but again, the funding source was National Grid through their energy saving program. Not a hundred percent, but maybe we could get fifty or sixty percent.
Mr. Buckley, to your point, of our total carbon footprint, over eighty percent of it is the elementary school. So if you're going to achieve twenty percent overall, that's a huge factor in addressing the issues at the elementary school.
Well, it's also not a, not a cheap operation up there to operate. I'm just looking at the vouchers tonight. It's the third most expensive school to operate, at least if this is a, if this is a bellwether, you know, the high school and the middle school are more expensive at this point. But, you know, certainly if we can save anything, and I know that when Mrs. Tatro was there, there was an awful lot of work done by that energy.
I do have a complete report of what was done back then.
Yeah.
And this will be, you know, moving forward from that.
So are you looking for a letter from the committee, or?
From the superintendent.
Superintendent.
I have no problem doing a letter.
And Michael, you wanted something added that we would, do you need that in the letter?
I'll make a motion that we allow Superintendent Davis to enter, produce a letter for the town of Millville supporting their green grant, and that the committee reserves the right to review any changes that are proposed for the school, for the Millville Elementary School.
Second.
Yeah, there's a motion, and motion by Mr. Buckley, second by Mrs. Robinson. Okay. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Gotcha.
Anyone else here? Okay.
Every dime helps.
You stay with it, do another public forum later. Just Mike, okay.
Nothing good on TV tonight, I guess.
Next, we have the report of the student representatives. Morgan McCarthy.
Um, well, so far in school, since it's only been a month, it's only been three weeks of actual school, we actually had the Harlem Wizards come into our lunches on Wednesday, so yesterday, and it was actually, like, wicked fun, like, everyone loved it. One of the seniors got to get up with them, and it was hilarious to watch. People videotaped it, and they made their presentation telling everyone that they're coming to the BMR gym to play The Teacher, it's October eighteenth, so that'll be something fun for families to do. Last Friday, there was an ice cream social in Uxbridge that we were in charge of, and it was for students with disabilities, so NHS and student council members went and volunteered. It was really fun, just like dancing and singing. It was karaoke, serving ice cream for those students. And the advisory program and NHS are working on their character counts for October, and cancer fundraiser awareness. We'll be doing a walk in Boston in October sixth. And then sports is going on. Our sports teams are actually doing really well this season, and it's awesome because boys varsity soccer, girls varsity soccer, boys cross-country, and girls field hockey are, all have winning records right now. So that's huge for BMR. And our boys' football team, as we know, is a varsity this year, so their games haven't been going as well as they planned, but they have a ton of support, which is great, that people are actually going to the games, and they're so far away. And our first home game for football is actually the fifth at twelve o'clock, so that'll be huge. Soccer has an under-the-lights game, their second one, coming up the October fourth. Girls play at six, so boys will play right after around seven thirty, and we have mobile lights that come in, and boys' soccer does a booth to see food and everything. So it's great to come to. And then homecoming weekend, obviously, you have the sports, which everyone can't wait to celebrate.
Mr. Gallagher.
I, um, oh, sorry. For student council, we're holding the homecoming dance on Friday of Columbus Day weekend, which is a professional day, so we'll go in during the day, we'll set up for the dance, we'll get everything all set, and then the dance will be later that night. I think it's, they're usually six to ten, but I think we shortened it an hour this year. I think it's seven to ten this year. And that same weekend, that Thursday, we have a community bonfire, which everyone's really looking forward to. That should be a very big event, because last year, I know, it was a lot. Now that more people have seen what it is, I'm sure there'll be a bigger interest this year. And that's going to be a good thing for all the sports teams. They're going to be able to fundraise. Each sports team has a booth, and other groups have booths. The sports teams are also selling different kinds of food. I know there's going to be, like, hot chocolate, candy apples, like, hot dogs, hamburgers, all that kind of stuff. The senior class, I'm one of the senior class officers, and we're going to be having, last year we noticed it was a lot of younger kids, so we're actually going to be having, like, a big area for games. And for the kids, we, student council used to hold the Halloween dance, and we figured it's right around the same time, so we can use a lot of the things that we use there. We're going to be selling tickets for games and things like that to help fundraise for, on the senior classes' end of things. And marching band, we're kind of, got the decks stacked against us this year with this mosquito issue, but we're hoping for frost, because we haven't really been outside. I know Millville Elementary is letting us use their field, their field off to the side. There we have on the Blackstone and Millville Police Department's lights that they use for the soccer games over there right now, so we're really, they're actually having practice now. But we're glad that we're getting to get outside, because not being outside during the weekend, only on Sundays, is really, is really pushing it. But we're glad that we get to get outside now, and that's it.
Can you talk about the home show coming this weekend?
Oh, yeah, sorry, completely. Yeah, we have the home show Saturday night. It's actually, another thing came up unexpectedly. Bellingham, where we normally have it, had a Asher-Ture Field put in this year, and it was supposed to be done by the beginning of September, and ended up getting pushed back till October, so we were unable to have a home show there this year, so there was a crunch to find a place. I know Mr. Bebo and Mr. Schaefer both were going kind of crazy there, looking for a place. They went to Milford and Franklin and Uxbridge, and there was just, all three of those didn't work out, and finally, Medway, Medway worked out. So Saturday night at Medway High School, it starts at five, and I believe the BMR band is on at eight fifteen.
So hopefully a lot of people get out and support.
I hope so. I mean, it's usually a pretty big event for us. It's usually a few thousand people there, so hopefully this year it'll be as big, even though it's further away.
And typically goes from five until, how long? How long does the whole thing run?
Actually, it's usually six. It usually starts at six, and we're there till about ten, but there was something where they needed to push it up an hour, so it'll be probably five. I think the awards are at nine, so nine thirty, it'll be over by probably.
And BMR's on about eight fifteen, you're saying, right?
Yes, they're the last, actually, awards are at eight thirty, because we're the last band on, so we'll be over by about nine, have that.
Deal. Very good. Questions for the students?
I don't have a question. I just want to say that Tuesday night, when the band was practicing in Millville, it was, I could actually hear it at my house. It was-
I can hear it at night.
I know how Blackstone feels.
Yeah.
Right, but it was nice. I mean, it was, and then there was, you know, some buzz on Facebook of, do you hear the drums? And so-
I felt bad for some of the families on, on that Berthelit Way. I was like, I'm sure they have no idea what's going on right now.
No, it's good.
You never fail to hear the band.
Yeah, it's good to hear you.
I used to live in Blackstone, I used to live up on Ascension Street up on the hill. I used to hear the band all the time, with how cool that was, and now I miss it, and they'll go, and I can hear it again.
Did you hear it? You could hear it almost everywhere. I'm not close, so-
How do you keep those Blackstone mosquitoes away from your lawn?
I, I don't know how that situation works, but you know, that's what I, that's the question I-
They just don't cross that line.
Yeah.
So the mosquitoes was one question.
Good thing.
That's a good thing.
Harlem Wizards?
Yeah.
That's a fundraiser?
Um, I, I'm not sure. They didn't really say much about it. I know that three seniors, me, Laura Gagnon, and Kelsey Solnier, all met them, like, in person, because we went up to the office looking for a teacher, and they just talked to us, and they were excited that we were seniors, so I wonder if it's something for us.
It's a middle school. It's a middle school-
I was going to say, I thought it was a middle, isn't it a middle school?
Parent Association, I think.
Yeah, well, we have teachers from BMR that are participating, too, and they're using the gym, so.
That was the middle school?
The middle school is, I believe, hosting it, but they're doing it at the gym for space.
Yeah, because they came to the middle school and, like, actually performed in assembly for the middle schools. So they gave us, like, a little bit at lunch.
But the fundraiser is for the, I believe, for the PTO at the middle school.
And I believe they went to all the schools, because I know my son came home with the permission slip saying-
From elementary.
We need to go, because he saw them playing basketball at the cafeteria, and very excited. So it was nice that they actually made it to the schools, not just the high school or the middle school.
It was a big surprise. All of a sudden, they came in and started playing basketball in the cafeteria.
Very friendly.
Yeah, that was definitely something different that, glad happened.
Very good. All right. Any other questions for them?
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Very good.
We actually want to sit in.
Great.
If you want to listen.
Like to have you.
I am, already.
All right, next thing is our appointments. Dr. Davis.
In your packet was the updated new hires. The only changes is that we had a couple of permanent subs that we hired, and then some of them were able to get jobs in other districts, so we have been replacing some permanent subs. I did meet with Dr. Hahey and Mrs. Brown at the Blackstone Elementary School. We had started a, a special education program there, a little bit more restrictive, and after getting it up and running, we did not staff it with an aide, just with a teacher, and the needs of the students clearly indicated that we needed to put an aide in place. So I have authorized an aide. We do not have money in the budget for that, but clearly, the five students that are being resourced in that, in that program, it's much too much of a load. Carol and Dr. Hahey tried manipulating some of the aide time around. It was not a good situation, because there needed to be consistency. So we, I did authorize an aide, and that'll, that'll cost us probably about an additional twelve thousand dollars. Don't want to give you the overview next month, based on our first three months and the quarter. We are going to be in the red in special ed, and we'll be talking about a strategy of how to deal with that. Okay. The next one is the update on the assistant superintendent's position. As I thought I was going to be able to tell you, I had somebody coming. I interviewed a woman on Friday, very interested, very capable, well-qualified, and she did not call me on Monday, and I reached out to her on Tuesday. Unfortunately, she had a medical issue with one of her children, and she was not able to take the position at this time. So I've reached out again. I'm oh-for-nine of seeing if I can find somebody to come in on an interim basis. I do want to let the committee know that Brad Monroe, who's, who does work on a part-time position, has really helped me tremendously in tying up some of the grants from last year and working on resubmission of some grants that we had to do, particularly the Race to the Top Grant. But this stress continues in the office, because we have a professional development day on the eleventh, and again, I've had to call on the principals to coordinate some of the professional development activities in their building, and I will be doing a four-hour workshop on educator evaluation for the new staff. So we are stressed in the office, you know, with not having somebody in that position, but between Brad, the principals, and myself, we're trying to hold up as much of that effort as we possibly can at this point. And, and I can't say enough about Tina Poirier, who's the clerk, who has the institutional knowledge, and she's been very helpful in, in giving me information, and Brad as well on the grants, and, and working on some of the detail pieces to do that. I was at the Millville Elementary School this year, and example, the literacy people were there doing training, and Carol and Barsha have really stepped up and are coordinating that. So the two of them are, are doing the things that normally the assistant superintendent would do, in order to make sure that program happens in their building, and staff are coordinated with substitutes in order to make it work. So can't thank them enough. All right.
Just a question. You mentioned that, you know, the stress in the office, and I knew you were down one staff with Patty in her resignation. Are you looking to fill that position, or do you have somebody taking over that, or that's all covered, or?
That, yeah.
And that's, but is that enough help, I guess, is what I'm asking?
No, at the last school committee meeting, I asked if I could hire a temporary part-time clerk-
Okay.
-for six hours a day for a couple of months to get us out from under.
Okay.
All right. You know, in order to-
Play catch-up, or whatever?
We're playing catch-up.
Yep.
And part of it is, you know, not having that other person in the office as the assistant superintendent.
Right, okay. Just curious.
Becoming twenty-four-seven.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else for Dr. Davis on this? Next thing is the subcommittee reports. Mike, anything in the government realm that we need to know about?
Well, the good news, I think we all know that the legislation from the governor's bill to rectify the issue with the Millville election, I've got final passage by the House and dramatically a few minutes later, the Senate, so concurred, and I think we're in the ten-day waiting period. If the governor doesn't sign it, it becomes law. If the governor does put his, sign, his, his signature on it, then it's just one bit of a process. So I don't think we'll have to worry about a veto seeing that he submitted it. So that's the good thing, and I don't think there's much else in the, in the way of any interest that BMR has at this point.
Brian, Diane, anything in the strategic planning to report?
Nothing since the last time I've been.
All right. Regional agreement? Anything going on there?
Well, we are anxiously waiting for the NSDEC projection, the enrollment projections. I think next month they'll be out, October?
We file the information based on the October one enrollment numbers, and, you know, as soon as I can expedite that data collection out of the office, we will get that to NSDEC and ask them to get us their projections back. So I suspect, you know, probably by the end of October, beginning of November, we should have that, have that data.
And as I said at our last meeting, we're, we really, I think at our next workshop, we'll definitely need to talk as a committee and make sure we are all on the same page on how we want to proceed.
I believe every member, every member of the committee got all of that document sent to you. Kathy, did you get that? Because we sent it out electronically.
I think, did you give me a copy of that, Steve?
No, I can get that for you, though.
Okay.
I'll run that for you.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Report of the superintendent.
Just an update on the, on the building projects. It's all in one memo. The, the contract for the Blackstone complex roof is in process. I'm meeting with Harold, Attorney Harold Gould tomorrow. It's, he's reviewed it, and it'll be going out to Greenwood Industries, which is the general contractor for that. We did get bids for the heating and ventilating that came in. We opened those last week, and we're good to go. We have a low bidder for that as well. So we are, looks like, well with, well within budget in terms, in terms of moving forward. All right, and the committee voted to allow the superintendent to sign those contracts. So as soon as Mr. Gould gives them to me tomorrow, we will sign them and get them off to Greenwood. We, the- We, the, the project manager and the architect have asked Greenwood to mobilize and to get their schedule to go ahead and order their supplies and materials. So they've been given the verbal go-ahead to, to make that happen. The Blackstone Millville roof project, as Mr. Buckley indicated, we have relief with the vote of the House and the Senate, and we will be moving forward on that project. What that means principally for the project is that we will, we will start the process to borrow the money, but more importantly, we'll move into that next phase of the architect and the OPM getting up the, the design documents and the construction documents. But again, the process for the high school roof, again, late spring, early summer, actually having that project get started for the actual physical construction.
Very mild winter.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Think mild. Alright. And the Millville Elementary School project, we have been meeting with the architect and project manager that have been assigned to us by MSBA, and we are in the process, Mr. Gould is in the process of finalizing the contracts with them. That is kind of a pro forma contract, because they really are, you know, told by MSBA how much money they can charge, so it's kind of pro forma. But that, that work will continue. That, for Mr. Reposey, still here, the Millville roof project, we will be hopefully on, we will, we will be on target to submit something for the warrant for funding at next annual town meeting at this point. That's the goal, to be able to develop a number and deal with it. The roof at the Millville Elementary is not the same, it's not a, it's not a, a flat roof, it's a pitched roof, and as most of you know, it's a shingled roof, which makes the replacement of that roof much cheaper in terms of, in terms of that. And the thing that the, the architects will be doing, will be doing test samples up to make sure there isn't any penetration damage. We know we've got a couple of leaks in the building, but now they'll look at the substrate to see if, if the decking's been compromised at all. But that project, compared to the Blackstone Elementary, will be coming in a lot less. It's simply because the material on the roof is much, is much less expensive at this point. So roofs are good. Done. Alright. The next item on the agenda, the Mass Association of School Committees and the Mass Association of School Superintendents has its annual conference in early November. We got a notice for the Blackstone Millville Committee. You can have a delegate to attend the delegate assembly, which is on Friday, November 8. And Mr. Chaplin did email me and said he's planning to go, and he would be willing to serve as delegate. I don't know what the protocol is with this committee.
I was gonna ask, do we need a, a motion to appoint Bill to be the delegate?
We have to, we have to sign this official form, so yes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Robinson, seconded by Mrs. Robin, to appoint Bill Chaplin to be the MASC delegate for the business meeting on November 8 in Hyannis. Discussion? Call for a vote? In favor, say yea?
Yes.
Yep, sorry. Aye. Opposed, say nay? Let's come here and say yea and nay. Yea. Okay. Opposed, say nay? Motion carried.
Is there any other member of the committee that was planning to go to that conference? I don't, I, I asked Donna Scungeo and...
You know, I wouldn't mind going. I, I mean, I have been a couple of years ago.
Okay.
But the forum does ask for an alternate to go as a delegate.
Hey, should we appoint Mrs. Robin the alternate?
Just remember, this is on the last day of the conference on Friday.
Oh, coming back, yeah.
And it starts at 3:30, so I just caution you.
I mean, motion that Mrs. Robin... She's sending one to him today.
Motion made by Mr. Buckley, seconded by Mrs. Robinson. Are you still up for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's only, that's only if, if Bill's not going, right?
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
Bill doesn't stay, so I think I'm pretty safe.
Any other discussion, then?
How do members of the committee get registered for the conference?
Typically, the central office has done that in the past.
Okay, so...
Made the registrations, and it's usually paid for out of the district committee budget.
Budget from the school department.
So I'm assuming, I'm, I'm going to meet with Mr. Chaplin tomorrow. I'll ask him, would you, would you like us to register you for the conference, Diane?
Yes, yes.
And do you need a room, or do you want to...
Do we have money? I mean, last, last time I went, I actually had a condo I could stay at. This time I don't have it anymore. So it's kind of a long trip.
The money question I asked Donna Scungeo, and no, there was not a specific line item for this. We'll have to look around your account.
For the conference?
Yes.
Oh, I thought they got sent in the, people went in the past on the committee.
We've paid for it out of one of the other accounts, whatever the other expenses are.
I don't know if they paid lodging, but I know they paid.
Then fine. If you don't have money, then that's fine.
I will follow up, and I have not seen the conference registration material. Did you...
We've been getting them in the mail, yeah.
Recently.
Recently, okay.
Yeah, they're probably online, too.
They're online as well?
Yeah, I, I know I...
We've got minutes left, so...
Registration. Okay.
No, I think they just, just come out with the, the program.
Right. So, alright. The next item in the packet...
We need to vote on that.
I'm sorry, we need to vote on the motion to send Bill as our delegate?
No, we need to do it with the assistant.
Oh, yeah, we have Diane being the assistant. All those in favor?
Alternate, yeah.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The record show that Diane's going to stay till the very end of the committee, of the meeting.
Well, you know, by that time, you might as well stay. Because you're not getting home at that point.
You can help clean up at the end, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
The next item in your packet is your, just your student enrollment, and it really has not changed from the last time I gave you this. My plan is, at, at, once a month, to give you the student enrollment. One of the numbers that we're sorting out at this point is the school choice. You know, how many students are continuing the school choice, and how many new students do we take in? So at this point, but this gives you a kind of a broader view. We can pull this off of X2 anytime, and it helps to kind of see the, to kind of see the numbers. But they're remaining, they're remaining pretty clear at this point. So you'll be getting this once a month from me. Okay? The next item on the agenda, I met with Mr. Dudak and Mr. Ducham at the high school. Attached to my memo, a baseball group is offering to provide funds and labor and donations to make improvements to our baseball and softball fields. It's outlined in the proposal. Many of them are, are, are safety issues in terms of putting up some backstopping and netting, as the two fields are relatively close, and, you know, foul balls and stray balls could get caught up in the net as opposed to people yelling "for!" Because I don't play golf. I don't have the sense of that, but I can understand when I looked at it, that it's not, not the safest situation out there.
I'm actually part of the softball team, so it's actually very common for, like, softball to be in, like, mid-game.
Yes.
And all of a sudden, like, one of the outfielders is, like, ducking because the baseball is coming to their head.
Right.
We've actually had a drug hit in the back of the head by a baseball.
So I'm convinced it's a safety issue.
Yes.
I just call your attention, you know, the proposal is fairly generous, but they are asking in, in consideration that there is a rental of baseball field by an AAU, a baseball program, and they're asking if that rental fee that's collected could also be used for offsetting some of the, some of the cost.
So they're looking for a waiver for when they use the field?
No, no, they would pay, but, but then they'd ask that the money that they pay gets diverted into fixing the field.
Is that coming, because I know some of this says hoping that BMR School District can cover this. Is that coming off of that coverage, or the...
Well, I need a, I need, as my motion says, subject to review of the cost. This is kind of a tentative set of costs. And what I said to Mr. Ducham and Mr. Dudak is I'd really need a more finalized cost. I don't have a problem with whatever we collect on the, on the, from the AAU. I don't know what the number is, but, yeah, let's say it's $1,000, that we, we would take that money out of that community revolving account and put it towards fields.
Is there any plan for the softball field on this, or is this just the front, the front baseball field?
That's what I was going to ask Morgan, Diane.
Yeah.
When you see, is there a softball need?
Well, it's...
Well, right now, our softball field is a football field, so there is no softball field right now.
Which would make it need more attention, in my opinion, but it was not in a very good...
Like, I know last year, we had, we didn't get as much help as the boys' baseball team did, so softball had to spend an entire day just doing field.
Doing their field.
And we're not, like, labor workers, we're softball players, so our field didn't come out very straight, or, like, it was a mess. We tried our best, but it definitely didn't come to par with the baseball field.
It was similar last year, though. I think Coach McNamara got his players out there several Saturdays.
Yeah, that's what they spent their practices. They would, every hour, they'd fix the field.
I thought it was, he donated his company time, no?
I think a couple of years back, there was some work done.
Yeah.
He got, like, he...
And then the kids did it. See, number six here, it says fix low-grade areas of infield's dirt. I, I'm just wondering if any of this is pertaining to the softball field, because I...
This is all baseball and soccer.
So it's not the backfield at all?
It's the front field.
Yeah, the biggest, the biggest...
Which really has not been repaired since the sewer line was put in. So you've got that.
Could we ask them to include that field?
I think what you need to do is you probably, you need to look at probably for the fiscal, next fiscal year is to also put some money aside going forward for the softball. Actually, there are two softball diamonds out there. I don't, I think one of them is pretty much just overrun.
Yeah, one of them, one of them's...
Off to the...
Yeah.
Yeah, the one by the tennis court, that, you can't even tell if it's a field.
Well, JV uses it to practice. Like, we, when there's games, like JV might have a home game and baseball might play, so it's varsity, we don't have another field, unless we go JFK and use their field, because they have one. But otherwise, we're stuck using that field and, like, taking ground balls off pounds of grass. Doesn't really work very well.
I mean, I don't have a question about these first few items, but the, the ones where they're asking us for us to cover, I, I would just like to see a newer proposal that includes both fields, because...
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
It needs the attention...
Me, too.
In the back.
And it also creates parity.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. If we're getting donated time, I mean, why can't we split it equally between the two?
I'm not clear on what you're asking me to do.
I don't think you'd probably tell them where they're going to donate their time to.
Well, I mean, the only thing is the AAU, they only use the baseball field, because I went to some of the games, the AAU at the BMR last year.
I think the money we're being asked to spend is above and beyond the AAU.
We're not, we're not committing any funds beyond, beyond the AAU rental, because my motion is subject to review of the cost. So I haven't, I'm not committing to any other than that, other than that AAU.
So will you come back to the committee with these, the breakdown of the...
Well, they need to, they, some of these are in September, you know, they need to get, get things done.
Can we break them down, then?
I'm not clear what you want, Erin.
I just want to include both fields. I mean, if we're spending some money...
Table the motion and take it up some other time.
Well...
I'm not, I'm not prepared to deal with that.
My concern is, I can understand there, if they're going to only use that field, why would they commit to fixing another field? And I understand the parity, but I think we, as a committee, have to look at the softball separate, if that's, in fact, not something they're ever going to use. And is this a blessing in disguise that they're going to help us fix it and do it? So that's one field taken care of, and then we'll look at the softball field.
Separately.
Separately.
Well, is, is that something that's typically done? User fees are targeted to one specific...
Well, that's not a user fee, that's a rental fee. So this is kind of a new, new place we're at, but realistically, we collect that money for that use of that field, so it probably should go back into that field, much like what Perry had talked to us about last week, about, you know, if we have a custodian that's here for a basketball game, we should be paying that custodian salary out of the fee that we collect. It just makes sense. It shouldn't come out of operations. I know Mr. McNamara and some of those, some of the baseball folks have been, this is not the first time that they've done it, come forward. I think that they did quite a bit of work last year and the year before, and then a couple of years before that. They did quite an extensive amount of work at the Millville Baseball Diamond, the John Dean Field up there behind the elementary school. So, you know, I, I don't want to get into a class warfare or anything like that, one team versus the other, but I'd like to kind of look at, okay, if we could make some of these improvements here, that also potentially could free up, not that there's a lot of money in the budget for sure, but i-if there was money in the budget for, for grounds, it could be used somewhere else. It could be used in, you know, for the softball field or, or, you know, the track area, whatever. I know it's fairly new there, but it's the same things.
Can I make a recommendation? Because we're going to get deep into this, and we're probably not going to be able to come back up again. Could we reword this motion to say move to accept the proposal to make field improvements? Because we're also talking, within this matrix that they sent us, as I mentioned, the soccer fields as well. Here in this motion, it says baseball field. If you take out the word "baseball," does that give us the flexibility to...
Well, my understanding is the baseball and soccer field are one and the same field. It's just the way they're laid out. So the outfield is the soccer field.
Well, I see soccer field occupies the outfield of the...
Yeah.
It's the, it's the outfield of the baseball field.
It also runs into the, the JV softball field, is the end zone of the, or the end of the soccer field.
Yeah, it's like out there, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that wording offers us some flexibility to go back and ask for more specifics and maybe challenge some, some parity as far as, you know...
I would simply ask that members of the committee take the responsibility to meet with these people. If you're raising the parity question, you need to negotiate this. It's not appropriate for me to do it.
Could we have them come in?
Should have come in.
No, I think we should table it for right now.
What is, what is the date of when they're going to do this? Are we missing out on something? I think somebody's giving us for something for nothing, and I feel like we're not taking it.
Well, I think that typically you'd probably do that seeding like at the, you know, now, or in the, in the fall, sort of, or winter.
So when is the date? I mean, what is the timeline that we have to sort of...
Well, wait a minute, just to play the soccer one.
When the soccer season would be over.
So end of October.
Depending on weather conditions, is when you would typically...
Should they come in?
Yeah.
Slice it and try to get some generating...
Well, it looks like the first three.
Termination of the grass before the snow.
Yeah, I don't want to miss out on anything.
Nope.
But, but you're right, as long as they're playing soccer on that field, they're not going to recede it.
No, no, no. It would happen, it would happen when the soccer season ended.
Which will give us time to talk about our next meeting.
Could they come in next meeting? Do we know?
If that's the pleasure of the committee. I'm just saying, I can't negotiate this. You know, you, you're raising parity issues, you're raising, I'm simply saying, you know...
Well, another thing, too, is I, I think we're all anxiously waiting our report, our report from Donna after the first three months, to see where we even stand budget-wise. So I think maybe those would fall into the same timeframe. If they come in and those numbers are being run for us, we'll know better where we stand with our budget.
I, I would recommend a, a motion to table, and I will notify them that you wish to have them appear before you at the public, your public meeting next, next time.
I'll make that motion.
Alright, a motion to table the baseball improvement discussion until our next meeting by Mrs. Banaco?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Greenstein. Discussion?
Is that the 10th?
I believe, yeah, next meeting would be October 10.
It could be the 10th.
It's the 2nd.
October 2nd?
What, no, 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 it's the 2nd Thursday.
Yeah, so that would be the 10th.
October 10th, okay.
Okay, she has a claim. So October 10th, we're going to ask them to be here?
No, the bonfire is Friday, the next night, the 11th.
She just said it was Thursday.
October 10th.
The dance is Friday.
Yeah, it's Thursday. So we go from the meeting to the bonfire?
So they'll be on our agenda for October 10th?
Go from the pan into the fire?
Maybe we can have it early? I mean...
Who's bringing the smores?
Okay. Alright, my motion, what's the pleasure of the committee? We, any discussion?
The motion is called for the vote.
Okay. Vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So we're going to discuss this at our next meeting, which, October 10. And we'd like the, who are we, who are we looking for there? Mr. Dud, Dudak and Ducham to come and present?
No, no, I think you need, I need you to talk to Mr. McNamara.
Okay.
They're the ones donating.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
I didn't see that. It didn't say who was donating, yeah.
That's the name that I was given. I don't, I've not met the man, so I can't tell.
Yeah, he probably is the one. Okay.
Alright. This was passed on to, to Mr. Ducham because of the change in athletic director. The next item is the, the state MCAS results have been made public, and I'm not prepared tonight to give you a full analysis. I will be doing that at the, at the first meeting in November, but I did provide you with some action steps that I will be taking. We did, we did a little snapshot summary, overall, looking at the ELA scores. They declined slightly, you know, but there was an increase at 10th grade. The math scores declined or remained similar, and the science scores increased at 5th grade, and that declined at 8th grade. and yet declined at 8th grade. So we have some analysis to do. I did the breakout at grades 3, 4, and 5. I listed them by the Blackstone and the Millville, on numbers when they're, when they're brought together, particularly, particularly when your N gets around 100 or less, percent variation, one or two kids, and all of a sudden, you're down 5%. So we have to always understand, you know, the statistics, those measures there, you know, have real value, you know, in terms of looking at the numbers. So when you have a population of 3rd grade in Blackstone of 107 kids, 3 or 4 kids move the percent. And at Millville, 36, you definitely move, you know, with that, in terms, in terms of the numbers. I did include the comparison of the district scores, the district scores, and these are for all students, looking at the, at the numbers, and you can see on the left, it says "district," and on the right, you can see the state. Again, the good news is our numbers, particularly at the, at the warning, failing numbers and the needs improvement are better than the state numbers, that is, they're smaller, slightly smaller than the state numbers, and our number of proficient students is continuing to move upward, and the number of advanced students in, particularly in mathematics, is moving in the right direction, in terms of that. And then the science and technology and engineering, those numbers definitely need some look, in terms of the number of our students that are in the, in the needs improvement range. But I will be looking at this more deeply. This is an assistant superintendent task that I'm taking on to do that. But I have action steps, and we do have a district data team, which is funded by our Race to the Top grant, and we posted those positions, and I will be able to draw on some of the teachers at the different levels to help looking at those, those numbers. And I'll be reviewing the numbers in general with the leadership team next, next Tuesday. We've had the numbers before they've been released officially, so the principals have been looking at their numbers for the last, better part of the last month, about 6 weeks, but now they've been made public, and, you know, and the, the children will be bringing home on Friday their MCAS results. They will be in a sealed envelope, and the principals will be doing a one-call to parents of those grade levels, or the schools at the elementary, telling them to look for it in the backpack. There's a specific document that we got from the state, came into the office last Friday, and those have all been broken apart, and they've been put in envelopes, and they will be going home with the students. Why? Because we don't have the money for postage.
Is that statewide? They could deliver it in Friday, just like statewide, they take the test?
They were delivered, I think statewide, to school districts. The commissioner simply says the schools have to get them out in a reasonable period of time. For us, it's a relatively small, so we decided that we would get them out this Friday. But they would be put in envelopes, student's name would be affixed to the envelope, but it's sealed, and they will be going home, you know, with, with the students for that.
Actually, my own household case, my son brought his home today. He's a sophomore. He took, he took the, the bio last year as a 9th grader.
And Mr. Dudek got him out today?
Yeah.
Okay.
Kudos to Mr. Dudek.
Good job. And the good news is, he made it to 10th.
Oh, good, well, they're out. And those of you that have children in the district, they will, they will look for them in terms, in terms of that, all right? But we have a lot of analysis to do, and looking at those numbers, the variation. The thing that you don't want to miss, and it's, and it's really the important thing, is the school district has made a lot of gains over the last several years, you know, when you look at it over time, particularly as we look at our 10th graders and the percentage of 10th graders that are scoring at proficient and advanced, and we're moving in the right direction relative to that. So sometimes when we say they declined, that sounds like a word that, ooh, but the decline sometimes is in fact a variation of a few students. That's not to say it's not important to study it, but the variation is always, there's always going to be variation. This is never going to be this line that's always going to be going up. In a small district, the real reality is the number is always going to go like this. We hope it's always going up, but it's going to go up a little bit, down a little, up a little bit, it's just the variation that people have to understand when you do this kind of an assessment process. What you don't want to see is steep declines. That's, that's the real, that's the real red flag that you have to look at in terms of moving, moving these numbers, okay? Any questions?
Do they collect any trending data, so they can see that over time?
Yes.
Does it take that variability out?
Again, in a small population, that's the dilemma. Variation over, over an N of under 100, it's much more difficult. The trend data, when we look at the state, you know, then it's not, it's not, it's a trend line, but if your, if your population is constantly, you know, fluctuating, you know, under 50 kids, it's, it's going to, it's going to hit, and you're going to say, what did we do wrong? That's the wrong question. We have to look at who were the children that didn't perform, and what do we know about them? Different question. And that's the beauty of being small, is you really get to ask a deeper question, because you're not dealing with, you know, huge trend in terms of that. So it's important. We also have new statistics this year, it's called a PPI, a performance indicator, and we can actually start to look at tracking students more specifically as they've moved through. Are they making progress every year? That's what we really want to see. Are they making progress? You know, it may not be dramatic progress, but are we seeing that, that particular student making progress? They may, they may be in the needs improvement category, but they went from low needs improvement to medium, that's what you want to see. That's, that's the growth that you're looking for, and that's the, the more in-depth analysis that you need to have teachers and principals kind of look at, all right? So get you some more detailed information in November. But we are looking at it, and that information is out public, available. And I included the commissioner's analysis, the governor's comments, and I do agree with the governor. We have to celebrate the good part of this and not get obsessed, you know, with looking at the, at the negative, we got to look at the positive and celebrate that, but certainly there's more work to be done as, as we explore deeper, you know, what are the, what is this data telling us as we analyze it? Okay? Thank you. That's all I have. Mr. Chairman.
All right, second public forum. Mr. Reposa, come on up.
Mr. Reposa, Millville. I'm now representing the Cable Access Committee. In our negotiation with Charter, they gave us a fiber link, actually 6 channels, from the elementary school to the town hall. We will be able, progress isn't as fast as I anticipated, but very soon, we'll be able to broadcast live from the elementary school. There are 6 fiber channels coming down to the, to the town hall. They will be, Charter will be installing a 24-channel panel. A pair will be run to the police department, and all with the intent of improving security at the elementary school with outside cameras. They will be able to be directly picked up at the police station and transmitted to the cruisers as well. The only hang-up there is that the chief is, put, is applied for a grant, an MIA grant for additional cameras, and the police department will have to purchase a transmitter and receiver for the fiber link. But I just thought I would share that with you, it's a pet project of mine, and...
That's great. That is good news, yeah.
Thanks for your work, Joe. Appreciate that.
We'll have to have a meeting there.
We can have a live meeting in Millville?
Why not?
We're live in Blackstone.
All right, committee forum. Anything to share?
Just to follow up on the MCAS analysis, thank you for that update, Dr. Davis. I think it's important also to note, you do have to acknowledge your accomplishments and celebrate them. It's nice to see that, you know, we are a level 2 district, but includes 2 level 1 schools, Level Elementary and the high school, which is great to see, and the other 3 schools are level 2, moving in the right direction, we hope, and so just really, that's kind of, put things in perspective, you have some neighboring communities that don't have that advantage, they're, they're struggling with lower, lower results, so hats off to the staff and to everyone that's really made that possible. That's all I have. Oh, one other thing before you go. Thank you to the Class of 2013 for a fabulous sign on the building. It looks magnificent. I was so glad to see that post, I shared it with several classmates of mine, and they were all very, very appreciative, and including a former member of the school committee, Mr. Bouvier, sent me a note saying, wow, what a great statement of school pride and district pride, so thank you very much for that wonderful present.
I saw it, too, and I was blown away when I saw it. At first, I didn't realize it was a donation, and I was like, who approved that expression? It looks really good. But between the scoreboard at the football field, and that on the building, it was just awesome what the, the graduates are giving back to their, to their, their school, so thank you to them.
Just to put out that Bebo's putting on their family weekend at Woodix this Saturday and Sunday from 10 to 5, and hope to see people there to support our local apple farm.
Very good.
I don't have anything.
Park field's on your deck after, no? Yes, no? Just wondering.
Just hope to see as many people as possible at the home show. Unfortunately, it's up in Medway, which was in our backyard, but on Saturday, the 28th, starting at 5, and BMR's going on about 8:15. Actually, I did just double-check, the bonfire is Thursday, October 10, 6:15 to 8 o'clock behind the high school, so, on how we can be there.
I don't see, we'll see if that's here either.
Could we consider moving the 10th back to the 9th, or do we...
Move our meeting back to the 9th?
Move our meeting to the high school, and then we can kind of go...
6:15 to 8 o'clock.
Yeah, that's not going to work.
The timing is tough.
What's prime committee meeting?
We can go to the bonfire at 6:15, and then go to the meeting.
Can people, will we have a quorum on Wednesday? Can anyone not make it on Wednesday the 9th?
What's the, I bought a health that night, but what's the time? I mean, it would be 6:30, 7?
Well, we're asking a few people to come, right? You want to have it at 7, or workshop at 6? What's good for you, Kathy?
I'm saying the earlier, the better, if I could do that and then go there, but I'll have to see, generally, we don't have a quorum for board of health all the time, it's myself and the other one to make it, Bobby Marks.
Does that work for you? Wednesday the 9th?
Regular time?
Mm-hmm.
Start.
Instead of...
Instead, so do we need a motion for that, or can we just make that?
You're going to need a motion to change it.
Is it going to be at 6 or 7? Is it at 6 or 7?
Well, we just keep the same thing, 6 and then...
Next one stays the 2nd, so the following week, okay.
Following, yeah.
We're on Wednesday, it's every other Wednesday.
I move that we change the next meeting from the 10th back to the 9th, in order for people to attend the bonfire.
Meeting made by Mr. Buckley, seconded by Ms. Greenstein, to move our next scheduled school committee meeting from Thursday, the 10th of October, to Wednesday, the 9th, at 6 o'clock. Any discussion?
Good catch, Steve.
Have a vote on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Just make sure the notices get out.
Get out.
We usually have those regular notices.
Right.
Otherwise, that public forum won't know.
One item that I'd like to place on the agenda for next time, if I can, we need to start talking about your budget process, how you develop it, and I'd like to kind of review what you've done in the past, but also make some suggestions of things that you should consider doing differently, all right? And I'd like time on the, either the regular agenda or the, or the workshop, I can work with Bill.
Sure.
How to do it, all right? Because we, we really need to get an organized process, not a reactive process.
Okay, so you want to be placed, probably in the workshop for the 9th?
Is that all right?
Yeah.
And then the other piece is what you're, you're going to have to talk about the superintendent search piece, so I think you've got a pretty full agenda, all right? With Mr. McNamara, if I can ask, if, you know, depending on his time schedule, we can accommodate him, we can move him around on the agenda?
Sure, why not?
Sure.
To accommodate, I don't, I've never met the man, but...
Can we have, is it possible to give the new athletic director, would that make sense? Like, he's covering all the fields.
Yeah, wouldn't be bad to have him here.
Have him in.
I'm not sure what his involvement is, but...
It'd be nice to be in.
Yeah, I'm, he's coaching, that's, you know, so he's commuting to Narragansett, Rhode Island. About an hour.
But he'd probably be staying for football practice and leaving after that, so, I would think, I wouldn't think he'd...
Oh, no.
Have practice, go home, come back.
No, 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 I'm, but he would have been here since 7:00 in the morning.
Yeah.
Just...
Could we invite him to come, but not make it like a mandatory thing, if he'd like to?
I think it'd be nice for us to meet him, too. I mean, there's a lot of new staff.
I just don't, I'm being honest with you, he is so new, and because he's coaching football, Mr. Ducharme is kind of in a better place to talk about baseball?
Probably, Mr. Ducharme probably knows the background on that, so...
Yeah, is that...
Yeah, that's fine. I think we should offer him the opportunity.
Yeah, yeah.
He wants to...
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure how much, how much depth of knowledge he currently has. Remember, we just hired him this summer, and then we, we lost the football coach, so he jumped in and did that, so he's devoting his time and energies to running the program, plus coaching a major sport.
Well, I think in the past, as the meetings go on, we've had department heads come in, and we should maybe kind of get that schedule going.
Yeah, that's what you were getting at.
And kind of figure out, maybe when football season's over, he ends up on the schedule.
Just a typical.
Yeah.
Anything further? And no executive session?
No executive session this evening, no.
Entertained a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Move by Mr. Buckley, seconded by Mrs. Vanaco. Discussion?
No Sox game tonight, either, God.
Thanks, Joe, again.[1760.12]